Let's do it. I'm not on charge list.
Sorry, all right. I call this Board of Selectments meeting to order for Member Nine, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Eric Gasperini. Town manager, Elizabeth Bunker, Deputy Town. Minutes, approve the minutes from October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one meetings, so the special town. The public hearing, excuse me, and the minutes.
So move.
Second, all those favor.
Oh, sorry, I did not vote.
All right, you weren't here.
He was not here, he stands, yes, thank you. Number three, approved and signed treasures warrant, number nineteen, so move.
Second.
All those in favor? For approved agenda, I believe we have two additions, correct, under seven A, appointments and resignations, we have five sewer, six library. I move the approved agenda as amended.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor? Five, communications broadband article.
I'm wondering if that's what I share this with the board.
Yeah. I finally found out how much it's gonna cost to get hooked up by Spectrum. It's not a small amount, I'll just say that. I'm not paying seven thousand dollars to do it, are you gonna pay me, pay seven thousand dollars to get hooked down?
No.
That's not even the total cost, it said it costs fifteen thousand dollars, they would pay eight, now I have to pay the rest.
To get internet.
To get hooked up by Spectrum, yes.
I mean, where you left it last was for me to follow up with the providers that are here, and I have not connected with them yet. Kendra Joe at the Institute was the one who followed by Don I seven. Melinda Spectrum and Jeff.
I believe we did actually ask you to run an actual RFP or prepare an RFP, not just for Spectrum or Consolidated, but whatever other provider might be interested.
Right, the. I think that was covered, and it requires a lot more input from the board, so I know the exactly what you want in our RFP if we're gonna put it up to bid. And suggestion was to just check with incumbents to see what the appetite was, and some of them are more interested in willing to go after some of the grant funds. And they're gonna likely be the lower cost option, because we already got infrastructure here, but certainly, the RFP would require us to have a more in-depth conversation about exactly what you wanted me to put in for someone to respond with, or I mean, just if you want something to get the detail, and then you're gonna really identify all the miles of road, all the drop location, and everything. I don't think the committees are pointing where they're.
We wouldn't be able to apply to any of this broadband funding in the town, because we rejected it.
I'm assuming there's still an avenue in which we could, if we were to partner. I mean, I'm assuming some of these allow us to, I mean, it depends on the funder, I think some of them were geared more towards fiber versus wireless solutions, some of them, I'm assuming, are leaving the door open for you to partner with someone. And the difference between the municipality creating an enterprise or a business and kind of having its own utility versus partnering with the utility. I think that, I'm assuming that's still an option for some of these.
What are the chances we could hear back from anyone in time, or do any of this, I feel like the window is closing on getting an application in, and there's no way we're gonna hear back from any of these providers. It's been my experience, in my opinion, that they don't really care about expanding their coverage and making it better, so. I would be surprised if we hear anything back in time to then get any of these dollars, I.
So why don't we just the application first?
Because the town voted against it.
Because it was when you put the property taxes up, but this is grant money that we're looking at.
Can't guarantee you'll get any of it.
No, that's true. But you can't get it at all if you didn't apply for it.
Town didn't vote to approve it, so we have no plan in place.
Well, the town never did.
We didn't even put it up for a vote. It was a survey.
It was a survey, and then the two public hearings, and then obviously, Selectments meeting brought up, but. That's, the point B, though, is that through this process, we can ask providers, Spectrum or Consolidated, you know, if they're interested in pursuing monies that are available, both, and now that the federal government has passed their infrastructure bill, there'll be more money available, presumably. And, and what that looks like for them, improving their service. You know, I don't think that people are opposed to better internet, I think the opposition was to pay the town, the town of Vital Haven actually owning that network.
And increasing property taxes is what I heard for the majority.
And liability of, you know.
Right, as a like, a business.
But as far as improving internet access, no, I think.
I think everybody wants that.
That's not what I heard, that's not what I heard at all, any of those meetings, but that's my personal take on it, so. I'm obviously for getting better internet, because I need it to work, but it's not a priority for everyone else, so. I'm open to any suggestions.
I mean, it can hurt to fill out the application for the grant money.
What, what are we applying for, as a publicly owned utility, as a private partnership, because then you need public-private partnership, and assuming you need the other party to be a part of that application process.
Whatever it takes, I mean. If there's grant money out there.
We don't have anyone to work on that right now, either.
No, we don't.
So.
Turn a light on by the west side?
I, I don't have, I don't have an answer, does anyone else, because. We don't have anyone to work on the application process, right? That's the bottom line.
You have to hire someone at this point.
Right.
Or a volunteer.
And there was a lot of hesitation from people that we heard from, that they don't even want anybody spent on it. Am I incorrect in that?
No, in fact, we made a motion that town funds would not go towards, or I should say, employee time on, you know, on the clock employee time would not go towards.
Right.
Both three, two, do you remember?
Well, that being said, we can, if this board so chooses, we can commit staff time, and we have money in the budget on broadband.
What kind of application are we looking at, Andy?
I haven't looked at any of them.
I mean, it was, it was pretty well known that there was gonna be this money coming out when we had those meetings, so, I mean. When they got voted down, I mean, everyone knew that there was gonna be this big chunk of money coming out, or they assumed it was coming out, and they still were pretty set against that thing, I mean, that's just the way I was looking at the meeting, because they were all saying, or not everyone was saying, but there was numbers thrown around that we could get half of it paid for, or three fourths of it paid for, and people still didn't seem to care that we didn't get any money at those meetings that I was at.
I think the biggest, one of the biggest negatives was the fact that the town might have been the owner of the of the business, or whatever the utility, and that would have been really risky, because if we didn't have customers, what are we gonna do? And a lot of people weren't interested in becoming a customer, because they don't need to have the high speed. You know, they live in town, they can, they get what they want. I don't think that it was necessarily, that nobody wants to have a better internet. It was just the town definitely, and I agree, the town should not, in my opinion, should not be the owner of the utility, it would cost, would have cost us a fortune. So it's just. So, in the meantime.
Anything less spectrum or Fairpoint warrant to go after a grant, I mean, we could partner with that, or the, what is it, a grant, or what is it? Grant application, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing we're up against is, you know, to be competitive, like, with someone like the downtown funding, for example, and I don't know if these are all set up the same way, but most of them generally are, is that something's gotta be put in, and so whether, whether it's enough for the town to say, we're willing to go after the grant for one of the incumbents, if they wanna partner with us, and, and our contribution to the project with them is to match, and the contribution to match the grant is their commitment to build. I don't know if that alone would be enough to satisfy it, or if we could get that to work, but a lot of times, you gotta be able to show the grantor, the applicant's got something invested, and putting something in too, unless these are, you know, not asking for that, I don't, again, there's gonna be a few of them out there, I'm sure, but I haven't.
So what if you work it to reach out to Spectrum and Consolidated? To see if they would be willing to partner, or is it just something we should continue on?
Imagine it hurting, no, I mean, see if they're injured, you know, see if they're interested in improving their service of the island, especially if it doesn't cost them out of pocket, or not much out of pocket. Then fantastic. And they, and they still have the liability of owning the infrastructure, of course. That's what I would suggest.
Does Matt have an ability to work on something like this, Andy?
I don't, depends how involved it ends up becoming.
I'm sorry?
Depends how involved it ends up becoming, I mean, I wouldn't balancing what his work plan is, wouldn't throw the whole grant application out, I mean, if there's just a couple of quick things to look at, which, which one are we talking about, is this only the one that this article mentions, or is it multiple sources? I might be able to help him, help figure out which ones are open and available, and by, you know, which time, but.
Well, without actually bought, reaching out to anybody yet, or maybe you'll have to, for answering my question, but you know, between now and our next meeting, just let us know, you know, if you can find out what that grant application looks like, and you know, what the, you know, time, timeline is. It's a ten thousand page application, or if it's a ten-page application, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and they give, I think that'll give this board a better understanding of how to direct you to proceed.
Should we reach out to?
And then maybe, and maybe, I mean, I'm not gonna tell, he knows, Andy knows what he's doing, but yeah, maybe, presumably, somebody working for Spectrum knows about what this grant application is gonna be. I mean, I'm sure they have a whole firm of grant writers.
Some of those results, maybe the town would be more accepting of, of the proposal.
I don't know.
We seriously doubt it.
Well, we'll give people that opportunity.
It can hurt all into it, I mean, that's money that is here, waiting for people to apply.
Yeah, people didn't want it before.
Well, they didn't, somewhat, Pam said it sounds like they didn't want it, because it would be owned by the town. Andy, so, would you be willing to see what you can find out, and?
Let's move on, six speakers from the floor.
If you're here to talk about the guard rail in the round pond.
This budgetizes for it.
Well, are there any other speakers on the floor? No, then why don't we move to nine A, Water District Round Pond Guard Rail.
Yeah, basically, this here is a request that board at least consider further protections of Round Pond, it's had a few accidents the last year, there's been pretty close to spills, accidents that have been bad enough that the DEPs donated a boom to us, because they have noticed it is, you know, an active threat. And we're in the process of getting that set up, but that's not in place, we don't have any controls for that. It would basically be, I mean, beyond, for Round Pond, we would shut down and move to Polly, which hasn't been done in a long time, the water quality is worse, and then it would be a cleanup operation, so I think just consider an extending that protection further, and maybe doing it in the form of a guard rail. Because I think it's gonna be the easiest cleanup, the different event. That, I don't have, you know, any numbers or anything like that, it's mostly just a petition to look into that, for as far as that one goes. The obvious, really close call in the spring, that probably would have been EP involved, if they'd known, if anyone had known about what happened, what happened. Had people on the scene, and just a couple of weeks ago, had a bar, I mean, it wasn't, not like the stones didn't keep them out, but it was close enough. Could have been right in the pond, this is the reason. I think it's a matter of time, and, and the guard rail, you can never prevent all the risks, but I think we can do more, but I can't, I don't have a bad budget, so.
Speaking of which, our budget process is coming up in the next couple of months, at least starting in the next couple of months, so that might give time, you know, Andy knows how much guard rail costs by the foot, and then whatever other work might need to be done, groundwork might need to be done to. Might have, might have to remove them.
Is that, is that state road?
No, no, just the, you know, just beginning of ours.
I don't just be very. Are there options, alternatively, like a berm, earth and berm? Yeah, I don't know, if there's more than that.
Yeah, something we'd have to get the engineers to look at, or so.
I mean, if you wanna get any alternatives, then I would definitely think we'd have to get the engineers involved to let us know, like, kinda what meets standards for road safety.
I would think a guard rail would work.
The guard rail replacement, I probably can just reach out to a couple companies and see if I can get quotes from a couple companies, and for the budget process.
All we need to know is how many feet long that is for that, right?
Yeah, generally, that, that works, I think, you know, given what it is, and you may not wanna, I mean, if that's all placed grout along the road's edge there, and they're not gonna be able to they may or may not be able to drive posts in there real easy.
Right.
So, I mean, they might, they might need to come and take a look at it, and, and see what it is, I mean, I've seen them drive, they drove post right through the the rock and end up with a bridge project, but eventually, it's wet as to soil, so I don't know if that's the case up there.
Could always go back to rebuild the old road back.
A different route?
Goes out through.
There is an old road there.
There is, that's where it used to go.
Can't remember.
I went out there on my, my little wagon. So you can still see the road bed, if you, if you know where it starts, but, I mean, that would cost a small fortune.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mentioned protective aim, then.
Right, yeah.
Um. Well. Um, it's in the watershed, that's for certain. But, any preventative measures we could take, because that really should be extended up near, like, when you come down around the corner, before you get to the pond, that's all open there, you can, you know, it really probably should go up that far even.
Yeah.
To start, but not on engineers. But we definitely need to think about something, doing something.
Right, I, I've brought this up to you, I think, before, over the years.
Especially when some of these vehicles don't get reported, and.
The last year, it's been days before.
Yeah. Get run home first.
Yeah.
Since somebody stole your vehicle.
Yeah.
And then I think also, um, see.
All right. We, everyone get on A, nine A.
Going back to seven now.
No, we're gonna go to nine C, wastewater pump replacement.
So, there is a wastewater pump at the Main Street Pump House that has a seal fail. And we looked into what that means for that pump, and it's highly unlikely that's a, like, a false alarm, because the way they're designed has a float, and not like a conductor that can get tripped, so it was, it was compared, it was told to me that it's similar to, you know, having your little oil light come on or something, that pump's still running, but one day it will completely stop, and the whole pump will be fried, so. Because of the importance of that pump station, it serves the whole east side, everything shy of the fire station, really. And, and Main Street. I am suggesting that gets, if that gets replaced, I got a proposal here from Williamson.
Who?
Was it the same one that was in the email?
Okay, great. No, I don't think it was, I just got this at four thirty, so. So this includes includes the labor, and also the portion of other work on Leo's Lane, so there's twelve, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred of it that goes to Leo's Lane. And that, that one that was in the email did not include labor, so this is basically, we, we worked out some of the details of, like, whether we need an explosion-proof pump, or, or cord length, things like that, to get a more accurate number, and then he added his labor in for the, for the whole trip, so that's what, basically, if you, it's around eleven thousand, and once you get rid of Leo's Lane. Yeah, I mean, i- if that pump goes down, it's a four to six week quoted head lead time, so, you know, if, I would say it'd be best to purchase it, start that, and, you know, we may, we may get it in before it fails, I think we will. And if it does fail, it's redundant, we have another pump, but then, then we're just, have to be staring at that pump all the time, make sure it's running, because if that stops, and everything on the east side stops, so. So, I mean, we can drop in other pumps, and, you know, rig stuff up temporarily, but that's a lot of labor to be avoided. So I think, I, that's my suggestion to the town. I would suggest approving slightly more than that, is, because it's last, obviously, the last job came in, and there's another twelve, fifteen hundred dollars on this for the last job, because it's the problem of not being out here to look at the site before you do it, you know, you come in, turns out you need another relay installed, or something like that, so jobs can tend to be a little more expensive. That's the nature, but I think as he works with us more, he'll be more familiar with our system, and has more accurate quotes, though Leo's Lane was his first job, so.
Sorry. But amongst it, so that we approve money for new pumps, correct? It was, or the, or one spot? This, this is the same project?
That was the control unit.
Oh, that's okay.
So, and, and those are no longer available, so that was a new control unit.
Okay.
This is for an actual pump.
Oh, okay.
That will still run on the old control unit, but can be, you know, changed over to the new one when that.
Well, I mean, we need to pump, it is what it is. If it's gonna fail, it's gonna fail.
Is that money in the budget, or?
Yeah, we appropriate fifty grand this year for
Repairs.
For the reserve, so my recommendation is that the money come from the reserve funds for the wastewater.
It's fifteen thousand and oh.
I haven't, I haven't seen the newest one.
This includes, Leo's Lane, he said, was another twelve hundred, so I would assume that it's eleven, eleven thousand, I mean, ten percent is.
This quote is just under thirteen, okay, so fifteen should be.
That's over ten percent contingency, that, I would think that would be fine.
Yeah.
And I did ask for him to give pretty conservative quotes, it's, yeah.
Okay.
So I, what do we have, do we have to make a motion, Andy? Make a motion, we take fifteen thousand out of the reserve fund for this new pump?
From the wastewater reserve?
Noise reserve, I'd suggest, wording up to.
Up to, okay.
And if it's less than that, it stays there.
Up to fifteen thousand out of the wastewater reserve fund.
Second. Seconded, any more discussion, questions, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you want. We don't blame you. All right, we will go back to seven A, appointments and resignations, seven A one Cemetery Committee.
I move, we appoint Michael Bunker Junior to Cemetery Trustees Board for a term ending June twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor? Was that all there was for the cemetery?
Oh, yes. I don't know what he's thinking.
Seven A two, Lanes Island Stewardship Committee.
Can we do them jointly, and then have to separate, I make a motion, we appoint Ben Romback and Janet Crossman to two terms, ending on June twenty twenty-two, for the Lanes Island Stewardship Committee. Second.
All those in favor? Seven A three, Planning Commission.
This is a, David Wiley wants to resign, I I make a motion, we accept David Wiley's resignation.
All those in favor? What, what if we didn't accept?
He just wouldn't show up.
Seven A four, Wastewatchers. This was Heather wanted to be added, right?
Yeah, it looks like we have some seats, do we have to carve each other twenty-three or twenty-four, there's three vacancies, it looks like.
Darlene's written her in at twenty-three.
We do typically go for the.
Shorter term.
I'm just asking a question before someone may know, make sure.
Oh, there it is.
I make a motion that we appoint Heather, Heather Sweets, right? To the vacancy six twenty-three. I'll make a swatch as committee.
Second. In the discussion, all those in favor? All right. Seven A five sewer.
Uh, Tanya Robichardt has submitted her resignation.
Emotionally, accept her resignation.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, seven A six, Library.
Maggie Olson has resigned from the Library Trustees.
I make a motion, we accept Maggie Olson's resignation to the Library Trustee.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven, the Planning Commission report.
We're still enough there is in one, since it's normal, or do you have something?
Okay, then we'll move on to seven C, Road Commissioner.
Didn't have the data entered in the past week in the program, and they have been trying to finish upgrading, and helping, when they did tip to Mountain Road, last, yesterday. I think they were gonna try and head out to Grand Island Road, and try and do that one today, and I think that was the last one that they had to grade and seal. Those are done, I'm trying to work on getting trucks in gear for plow season.
Did we get the truck back, but had the issue with the engine with the low power, or whatever, we must have that back by now.
Issue with the engine with the low power or whatever, we must have that back by now.
Came back, um, the light came on again the other day for, came, they did a regen. It's just, it's the issue they've had, that, since you've had it, that diesel engine, um. Continue to probably guess apparently there'll be a thing, um. With Dan's resignation from road commissioner, um, that was working through this week or the third day this week. So I'm trying to work with him to figure out kind of, put in a memo, I don't know, my report, I think. Just a few points in there to think about, um, but trying to, been working, um, fair enough to try and figure out how best to help with that. Transitioning, help fill the gaps that he was up there every morning, um, trying to figure out how to keep, help keep things going. Still down a foreman, disposition, so. And then the winner, so it'll be interesting, a lot of time spent figuring out.
So we have four open vacancies now, correct?
Uh, towards six.
Six.
You know, we got the deputy clerk, uh, public works foreman, and most director.
Road Commissioner.
Now, Road Commissioner Custodian, and.
Not good.
Only three of them are posted at the moment. That's nutshell with the public works, so I'll be taking a more active role in that in the short term and trying to find a. Something to help us through the winter.
I saw your emails, that, is that in the, your report to come to? I hope the job description and.
This isn't that.
Eight, old business, I'm seeing none. All right, we move on, nine, the fiscal sponsor request, Community Development Corporation.
I'd be take this, you have a request that we, as a fiscal sponsor for a grant that the, Community Development Corporation would like to.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, if you guys need further explanation than the, than the request that I sent, but essentially, um, you know, obviously to receive grant funding. Need to be the proper entity, this, the Community Development Corporation is being formed and that's what this funding would enable it to do. Um, so, uh, we would need to work with, um, either another five oh one C three or, uh, my immediate thought was, was the town. I don't think it's a heavy lift in, in terms of responsibility, I outlined what it would require in terms of staff time. So, my request is, would the town be willing to serve as, of, as that fiscal response or to accept the funds? And then I would work with Debbie, um, in terms of, you know, what, what that would entail.
I'm strongly in favor of it, as long as Andy is, as long as Andy doesn't see a problem.
No, they were pretty simple, the report too, when we had the last one, so I don't, it shouldn't be any, and they gave her whoever's, would be responsible for. That follow up ultimately, but.
All you have to do is sign the, the pay for it for the town and then Debbie, how many hours is it for Debbie, like an hour a month after the initial setting up of the checking account?
I wouldn't even imagine that, I mean, it depends how frequent the requests are for reimbursement, I mean.
Yeah, and I'll try to, I'll really try to keep it minimal in terms of my request of her and I try, I track and, and then she just notes in her memos, like, you know, in the, in the grant funding, what, what it's for. So, I mean, we've done this with, with several other grants, I mean, I've worked with her on several other grants, so I feel like we, we do that pretty smoothly and I don't think it would be a heavy lift at all.
The only question I had was. Um, the period, sponsorship period to end at the close of fiscal year twenty-one, and then it says June thirtieth of this year, I'm assuming.
Oh, sorry, typo. Typo, yeah, thank you, sorry.
That was all I had, so.
That's about the only thing I would request is that it does end, so it doesn't span into another.
Yeah, that, that's for certain, we'll make sure that, that's the case, yep.
Okay, do we need to make a motion or?
I would, yeah, all right.
I'll make a motion that the town. Goes through the grant request for the main community foundation on behalf of the Community Development Corporation, is that how you worded it?
What to act as the fiscal sponsor.
Ask the fiscal sponsor for main community foundation grant for the community development.
Startup expenses, okay. Uh, second motion.
Yep.
Any discussion, all those in favor? All right.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Nine D, approve special town.
Hopefully, didn't, I didn't, I didn't know what day, what day you wanted to have it. We had the last meeting, we weren't sure.
I don't think we wanna have it.
Yeah, I don't think.
Two weeks from now would be, that week of Thanksgiving, right, so I don't think.
Probably have it in the first meeting, or probably our only meeting in December.
We could have it. Tuesday after that, we're thirty, we could meet then, do we wanna do that, or do we wanna wait until December?
Tuesday the third is fine with me, I don't know, but. So we're just gonna skip that twenty-third meeting and then just meet on the thirtieth, right? Like the whole town meeting thing, we're not just gonna, I would assume, we're not gonna have a meeting the twenty-third and.
I don't think.
No, no, we have. We'll just go to town meeting and then we'd have a regular.
Okay, so we're just gonna wait, we're gonna wait till the thirtieth.
Yeah, because it's Thanksgiving weekend, yeah, that's. Yep, and then we'll have the select for me.
So she'll have to, um.
He's already got five thirty.
Or someone does.
Do we want it?
Yes.
Is that fine?
Five thirty.
Yep, yeah, just come in and sign it, um. First thing in the morning.
Sometime.
So we have something to sign in the morning, you said?
When it gets redone, probably what, come up by, will you have, will you have it ready by, will you have it ready by what, nine?
Uh, seven thirty probably, nine o'clock for sure.
I'm going on eight forty-five, so.
Be ready by then.
I'll be up here at one, so.
I move that we approve the special town meeting warrant for the thirtieth of November at five, at five o'clock for the article presented.
Second, all those in favor? And report of town manager.
Same vacancies and, and then since our last meeting, um, two more, uh, the road commissioner and the, um, Deli's passing. But the, I don't know if you have any thoughts on how to. All of her, her respects to, to Deli, if you wanted to do something, I saw they have a memorial coming up, I don't know if you wanna donate anything towards that or something, but probably should do something for him. Usually do something for the families. Your employee passes.
What do we do?
Yeah, what have we done in the past?
Yeah, I, I.
It ranges, I mean, something as, as little as flowers, and I did see that where there was a call for. Help with the food, the, I imagine it's gonna be a pretty sizable service, and I don't know if we wanna think about with the selectmen's. Contingency or fund, if you wanted to authorize a certain amount of money to help go towards, towards that.
Who was in charge of that?
I think it's called Candy.
Candy, right. Um, I would suggest that we donate, um, some money to the food, to help pay for some food. And I don't know if anybody would wanna do flowers too. What is that?
Do they have, I mean, are they asking for donations for anything else besides the food?
Yeah, if there was something wanted to donate in lieu of flowers or.
Right, like if you wanted money to go to elder care or just, you know, something else like that, I mean.
When is the service, Saturday at eleven, this, this comes, the twentieth.
So we come Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Memorial Gibson is maybe made to final haven elder care. Okay, maybe we should do that instead?
I would say.
I would, I would rather see the money go to that than flowers, just.
Oh, absolutely.
Flowers are great, but, yes.
Well, I mean, now that we know there's a place. Yeah, Saturday to twentieth.
So how much do we usually do, is it like fifty or a hundred, or how much, what is the typical?
And for what the board's done in the past, there's no typicals, doesn't generally happen, but, um, you know, I said in the past, it's, we've contributed flowers before, when someone in the family, workforce has passed, but.
I move, whatever, I move the town contributes a hundred dollars from the selectmen's reserve or contingency to vital have an elder care services.
And, oh.
Motion made and seconded, let's vote on that one first, all's in favor, okay. Do you wanna make a separate motion with?
Well, I was wondering if that you still wanna send money for, to Candy Barton, for food or the hundred dollars to the.
I, I made a motion for elder care.
Right, I'm asking if you wanna do.
You can make a motion.
Do you wanna do a donation for, for food also, okay, I would like to make a motion that we send. Check to Candy Barton to help cover costs of food for Deli's.
How much?
Fifty bucks. Fifty dollars, in the amount of fifty dollars.
I'll send them, I'll second that.
Seconded, all those in favor? All right.
Have you gotten any, I see, a- again, you have the thing about the benefit package and wages, have you gotten any more info from what other towns do? And I know you were trying to get a couple more responses last time, and I didn't know if you had or not.
Think I'd gotten one more, think I'm up to six now.
So I'm still not really anything too definitive.
No, and, I mean, for the budget process, I, I mean, I have a conference coming up, it's like a one day thing down in Portland, so. And perhaps it's something I can get a quick poll on, folks, and they're all in the same place, um, at least help with the budget, I just don't have it before.
I mean, it's nothing we can really do this year anyway, is it, to raise wages and?
In the middle of the year, it'd be, we'd have to sort of go back and look at the budget pretty close and figure out where, you know, if you can raise the wage, then.
But it's something, it's something we should definitely talk about in January, February, when you get to the budget season for all these positions, since.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be the, it's gonna be the top priority, I would think, for our next budget.
I mean, if minimum wage in Maine right now is twelve fifteen and goes up a certain percentage for inflation, and if inflation's seven percent, it's gonna be thirteen dollars an hour. And, I mean, that's pretty much what we pay now, so I mean, that's not, you can go work at McDonald's and get fifteen dollars an hour, you're not gonna.
And I think they're giving five hundred dollar signing bonus too.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we definitely need to look at this when we get to that season.
Oh, and in some of the private sector, I mean, there used to be, uh, you know, the benefit of working for local government or government was you, you couldn't compete with the wages in the private sector, but you had good benefit packages. And now, we're not competing with the wages anymore, and couldn't before, but we're really not competing with them, and some of those private sectors are offering benefits. Um, so we're not really at all competitive, when you look at it, where we are today from where it was a few years ago. Fire MS, we did have a quick meeting today, um, with Mark and Pat and a couple of the volunteers, ones from each department. Just talking about recruitment and retention, and trying to come up with some ideas, kind of been tiptoeing around it and tried some things here and there. And Pat hosted a cookout back in the summer, um, and get some folks with EMS and tried to have everyone, everyone on the crew bring someone with them that they thought might be interested in joining. And I think from that, I think we ended up with two or three, um. So that's good, and one of them is, uh, moving away, and I don't know if the other one or two, they're still drivers, I don't know if they've gone through. But it's interesting going beyond that. Um, and on the fire, there has been a few newer ones, um, you know, it's just the numbers are really low on both departments and I'm just worried about burnout. And of those that are in it, they're signing up a lot, knowing a lot for certain things, um, it's just something that we're just trying to figure out, what can we do? Some of it's just the nature of it, there's a lot of training requirement, and it hasn't helped.
But this isn't a final even only issue, is it, it's a countrywide, statewide, everything.
It's an issue everywhere, and, you know, a lot of places have the luxury of mutual aid, and we don't. And what we do is just not as quick as most places, and get away for the boat to leave Rockland. And, so I mean, that's, yes, and it's just how do we?
Is there, I mean, have you seen any good ideas anywhere in the state or anywhere in the country?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's certainly things out there and it's not, and there's no one silver bullet for it, I mean, it really depends on the people, um, you know, things like marketing and trying to just have more of a social, you know, media presence on, on it. You know, it's one thing that a lot of places are relying on, you know, younger people are just, you're more used to going to social media to find things. And so, it's been in the wind before, tried other things, I think we need to try that. And show, show the community that we're active, we're out there, explain a little bit more about what it's like or what it takes to be on both services. Um, explain that there's levels of certification and, you know, you don't have to be an interior firefighter to join the fire department, there's other things that, you know, you can be and get to, if you wanna get that far, you can. I think just trying to explain some of that, there's a new, um, training facility in St. George, they just built, I'm hoping I saw that. And there's a live burn facility there, and that firefighters can go to and train how to go in the structure fires. It's nice that it's right there.
Yeah.
There's one, at one point, I thought it could be built in cast steel, I thought, I don't know if that's happened yet, um. So it, it's just trying to figure out what can we do, it's not, we're not in alone, but just worried about where we're at. Everyone seen the surveyors around, or at least one of them around, it's just the one or a couple, but.
I picked his stuff up just at the edge of dock, which I thought was, you probably should have picked it up a little bit earlier, because I barely saw him, but that just made, he had his vest and stuff on, but it seemed like he stood a little bit longer than he should have today, that's all.
Uh, so we are, I've got two or one unanswered email from, um, EBA, and what they need still from us. Last, they wanted a letter, the lawyers wanted a letters, um, just clarifying that the funds we're putting up for matching funds are. Ours and are committed and we're not bringing in other new, potential new sources of funding to, for the match, and so I did draft that letter again, and we had one before. Hopefully that, you know, when I said, I haven't heard if that satisfies their needs, so hopefully that does, but we're still working through that. Again, once we get that finalized, we can go stronger into the northern borders paperwork and finalize that. Um, we are, we're still also waiting to see if we're successful in any of the congressional funding. Both of those still sit in their respective committees, so.
Wish we could be as slow as them.
Um, could happen, it could happen at any point, it could, it could, you know, again, whether it's one, none, or both, I don't know, but, um, with the northern borders, we were trying to kind of line up, uh. You know, scenario A, we don't get any additional funding, so here's the two million dollar project for northern borders, which they're paying a million, and we get one of them, here's what it would look like if we expanded the scope of work to include more drainage or waste, or walk drinking water project. And then, the second one comes in similar, what that looks like.
It has to do with drinking water, is that anything we could use the guardrail for?
Uh, I can ask. Well, it's fair, it's fair, I can ask, I just, I don't know where the scope, we, the geographic scope we fit, we have is Main Street, so I don't know.
You just said drinking water, just.
Yeah, no, it's worth asking, and same thing with the Cabana Boat Project, I mean, the flood resiliency is sometimes tucked into the, one of those programs, so.
If that's anything, even if they just paid for the, the engineering work or something, would be better than nothing.
Yeah, well, the, the funds we're supposed to get. From the county, right, we can use that for the guardrail, right, we're supposed to get, we're supposed to get a hundred sixteen thousand.
We're supposed to get a hundred sixteen thousand. That'd be enough for a guardrail.
Well, that's from the state. Or that's, we already got that, right?
You got half of it. There's a half we have to request. Um, in this.
Well, I would hope that would cover a guardrail.
Yeah, I think, but um, we have to. Yeah, I mean, we have to make sure it connects and is tied directly to the.
Oh, yeah.
Rules of the funding and the high spending. So those are still, I believe, still in interim. Um, while they're in interim, you can spend it based on that. Um. We haven't had any serious discussions about how we of the town would like to see it spent. Um, presumably it's something I would. Heard it both ways. There's been suggestion and guidance that whatever your normal budgeting process is, it go through that. Don't treat it like a grant. And then I've got others and colleagues that are saying we're treating it like a grant. So it's not clear one way or the other how it should be treated, but there's a big difference between the select board deciding alone versus the town meeting process, which is how we normally determine appropriations and. So it's. Probably worth starting to think about, even with the interim rules, kind of, you know, some point soon. Um, a list of projects. Nineteen thousand will go won't go very far, but it'll get some things.
When do they think they'll have the final ready?
Uh, I don't know.
When do we have to spend the money by?
Uh, we have to commit it to be spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty four and actually have spent it by twenty twenty six. But I was thinking if the garbage is something you want to get done sooner than later. Yeah, I don't. I fifty five thousand we received so far. Right, I don't I don't know that that project would be eligible without going through that. I'd come initially. It's all it's that for those funds are supposed to be in response to. The pandemic and so you're supposed to be able to use the only infrastructure projects are um water, wastewater and broadband.
Well, this is for water.
It is for water. Um, so it's a matter of making sure that it might work. I mean, there's a bunch of other projects that certainly are. Good candidates for it if we sat and came up with a list.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking if we wanted to start on that now, we have funds, but if we want to go through the budget process, we're not that far from that either, so. I mean, I don't think it's something that we get done before. The budget.
Springtime and yeah.
Yeah. I'm guessing by the time we have to get like some someone to bid on it, someone to come out here, it's gonna be. Springtime. And he said he's gonna reach out to some people that knows about guardrails and see about getting that.
Nobody goes into round home. Well, and with even with a guardrail, frankly, um, you know, it's it'd be a different design from what's there now, but even. Guardrails, people go through guardrails if they're going too fast or have a piece of equipment or a truck too heavy, it's gonna go through. But they they're huge pieces of granite there now, correct? Couldn't you in theory put the garble in front of that? So if you went through the garble, you'd then hit the rocks.
I don't know if there'd be enough.
I think it's on the edge of the road. You start taking the road.
Okay, I mean, there is probably three feet at most. Between the edge of the pavement and where the water is in some spots, some places less.
Not much.
Um.
And the rocks are, you know, they.
Two feet.
They're not gonna. Keep anything from going over them or through them.
Well, they did. They did that when that.
Well, it did to a certain degree.
Might push the rock into the car stayed.
If.
That's what a guardrail.
Well, kind.
Essentially what a guardrail.
Right.
It gives a little and keeps the car.
But the side rail would definitely be. Stronger than the rocks, I would assume, in theory, from keeping a vehicle.
And don't we have a problem anyway that the basin bridge, when that's supposed to have granite blocks as?
Yeah, yeah, at least these got cables in front of them. So you're gonna hit the cable. The ones that they get the cable in theory and kind of the other ones where they're just granite blocks. Yeah, those um. Maybe you're. Something suitable. Sorry, I'm sorry, I said that.
Creed's Creed's call.
That's another one that.
That to me is way more dangerous than.
You about this much.
I mean, the rocks slowly.
Yeah.
And that's nothing.
Pickup truck.
So that to me should be on our list of priorities.
It's on on a list and we got a lot of priorities and I guess perhaps I'll just skip to my memo and that's there. Um, I mean, we've got a lengthy list of road projects and construction needs and. Um, I think either to fill out this year or for next year's budget process, this board and town needs to really. Look at what we spend for what we're expecting to have done and what we spend inappropriate for roadwork. And the projects that we have coming and think about treating that.
Yeah, when you put it the way you put it, it is a pretty small amount for the amount of roads that we have budget. I never really looked at it that way.
I mean, we've, I mean, we know what we've had. We know how we've had it structured in the past and and we know that there's still a long list of things we need to done. Um, I really do think we're at a point where we need to have someone who's. Afforded the time and the salary to to spend the time to really create the work plans that are necessary to see them get get done. I mean, they're on our list. They're on our priority list, but we've got a lot of lists and I just it's just not getting there. Um. And it's just acknowledgement that especially right now with the positions we have open. It's just not working the way it is. It's it's gonna cost some money to set it up that way if that's the way we think it would work. Um, but. If you're running a three quarter or a million dollar business, when you combine transfer station and and road and think of that as our public works, if you will.
Yeah.
And this is some places do. And that can be my thought potentially is if we had a position that, you know. As a director overseas, kind of both a foreman for each. We have a foreman at transfer station now. Um, you know, and creating a foreman's position as we have, but then having a director to really. Communicate, tie it together and see these things through. This is something we're capable of. And that leaves. You know, the other. Two and a half million to need to manage and work with. In acknowledging we have a lot of projects. And we don't think we we haven't spent all of the old repair budget in the last years. It's not because we don't have a need for it. It's just we haven't had a chance to do it.
Right.
Um, and that creates coming, name it. There's a bunch of them. There's a whole list for a long time.
Yeah, and I'm not guardrail. And obviously, the one paving project, we haven't finished a ditch on Northern Road for the paving project or culvert replacement.
Right, and that goes back to, you know, having our equipment or crew size to do ourself or having the ability and, you know, and flexibility and waiting for it to be done when you hire it out.
Yeah, somebody somebody is available on the outside to do the work. You know, it's only.
None of it's getting to.
Yeah, I mean, are, you know, you just sort of go to Rockland and then we're contracted is available for work versus here. Just say that's what it is. It's price you pay for living on that one. As they told us. They say keep telling.
As they continue to tell us. So leave us with the rest of this year. Um, I don't, I have some recommendations there. Um, I don't know what your thoughts are on those at this point. I'm hopeful, maybe that I can help find, hopefully find someone to step in and act as a foreman, you know, at least to get us through winter. Um.
I think that we should follow your recommendations. I mean, you kind of have a finger on better than we do. You're here every day. I mean.
You see this.
I think I think there's no sense to hire a full time public works foreman if we're gonna try and combine the jobs for next year, because then we're just gonna have to rehire someone if you can find, I think. I mean, I'm all, do we need to make a motion or just kind of just say?
I mean, if I'm comfortable with that, I mean, we have a budget. It's not asking you to appropriate more money. It's just. Reaching, you know, kind of restructuring, you know, what's within it.
Well, for the rest of this year, I think we should definitely, I mean, not this this calendar year. I mean, not like until like another month, two months, whatever. I mean, we've been trying to find someone. For. What, three, four, five months at least now, right?
That was a starting at twenty dollars now.
Huh?
That was starting at twenty dollars now. So what what would this full time?
Well, this would be part time for the rest of the year, then we'd have to figure out what the full time road commissioner.
Well, yeah, but we're gonna start. Yeah, I'm. You're gonna post a full time the full time position soon. And I mean, I'd like you to review the draft of a new position and I need to come up with that.
Okay.
Um, hopefully for the next meeting, I can have that. And Mike, and as it says there, I mean, if. December twenty first is or December first is probably a little little ambitious. Um, but certainly by the end of the calendar year, it'd be good to be able to be in a position to be able to post something. If you want to go that route. Um, and I'll have a better chances, let you know what the. Cost for that position salary wise would be, but I'm assuming we're talking somewhere between fifty five and sixty five is my guess.
And how much is the road commissioner right now?
The part time ten hour a week commissioner, road commissioner's position is fifteen thousand a year.
So it would be an extra forty, fifty thousand dollars on budget on top of that, right? Because presumably that would be coming out of off the budget, right?
Right, yeah. Fifty five to sixty, you said? That's my guess.
And then benefits, obviously. Right, benefits retirement, that's the third day.
I mean, with the position certainly comes, I mean, expect, again, being able to hold the panel. Here's here's the work plan we're expecting to do down and again, trying to force that budget process to really start with. The goals and like what are we, what can we get done this year? Having the capital projects on there and and then. Soon as the budget's passed or just before having that work plan laid out and really being able to. Know if we can or can't get to. I think some of it is we assume we can get to it. And then we realize we can't. It's now too late into the year to try and hire to have it done.
Right.
So, you know, being able to plan for that and. Having having that opportunity to. See the, you know, six months at a time maybe and just know that we kind of can't get to certain things. But that the expectation would be that that position would be. You know, accountable for.
Right.
We have to multiple those metrics and that's something I've been trying to find a way for us to get to is really. When you when you have our goal or our work plan for the years coming up with, so we can share with the board where we are quarterly or monthly on that work plan and how we completed it right now. It's just a general list of. We know we got to get all this done. We're we're just chasing, it seems. Um. With that, I think with that position, we'd be in a good spot. The right people in it, a person in it to.
Well, they may be in charge of the dump too and all the fees and making sure everything's going right up there too, correct?
It can be. I mean, I don't know in the short term. I mean, I think emphasis needs to be on the road in my mind, thinking long.
Well, I mean, we have a big project going on up in the dump at some point, so I mean.
I think long term, it wouldn't hurt to have like that position. Kind of the overarching for public works and have it look as though transfer station and public works and have that person be the supervisor for both sets of employees. Um, you know, going forward, looking in the future, in the next five, five years or so, probably having some cross, you know, the the ability for.
Well, like I, well, that's what I was thinking. I'd be hiring someone to work at the dump. Maybe they could also help plow in the winter on some storms, you know, maybe that could be part of the job description in the future instead of. You just work here, you you're a public works employee, but you forty hours a week are to them, but if there's a storm, you might get called in.
Right. I mean, I think it's worth considering as we, whenever that time comes to, you know, on the road, I think I just want to be able to set us up for. That's where I think it's headed. And it's not threatening anything right now or changing anything right now, other than just saying, just let's get the right person in there, get the structure set up and start thinking about that. And help do that in the next five years, probably. You know, as it is, we still have a a short, don't even have a shortlist that I know of for plowing. Um, for winter, we have. You know, our full time workers, but. I'm not aware of anyone that had expressed interest to Dan about.
About.
Plowing, helping on Main Street or plowing the roads that he has plowed in the past for us and up off of North Haven or the North End and off of Old Woodward Neck. He was usually going in and plowing on his own, um, Zeke's Point. Once the bottom, the end of Young's Road and. Went out towards Sharon's there. And then Crockett's River and Tiptoe and Fishhead. So if our one of our trucks, you know, just acknowledging we didn't couldn't spread it that thin and just needed extra help, so. It'd be something we need to do and, you know, may need to can't find it and need to prioritize certain roads and it just may or may not take longer to get to something, depending on the storm and is available.
Can only do what we can do, I mean. And if there's like an EMS call, then they'll have to go plow in front of the EMS. I mean, they'll have to be in contact or something like that. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only so much we can do with a crew of certain size. Unless people people want to step up, I'm I'm no plow truck driver.
You don't want to see me drive one of those. You'll be out, you'll be out of plow truck pretty quickly. And I'm I'm hoping, knock on wood, but I mean, things do break in the winter time. That's when they're likely to break, but. I'm really hoping that it's a mild winter because, you know, with the shortage of. Car parts and truck parts, I'm just worried about what that looks like when that happens, so. Probably everyone's up against it. It's probably not gonna be great. Uh, going back to the other parts of the port, the storm on the on Halloween, um. We put together um some estimates of what the it costs and so right now. Just on the public works side. I think we were close to seven grand. I think Mark, I don't remember if that, I don't think that included Mark's firefighter's time where they were.
Pumping out sellers and stuff.
Better part of ten hours or so, I think, like between the pole accident and.
What about, um, what's been not just pole accident, but like when trees fell on poles, is that included in that seven thousand?
If they responded to it and did, I mean, our guys were, we had two of them that were out on public boards that were just kind of clearing brush off the road during the storm and then. Um, the number also includes some follow up. Um. Uh, trying to restore certain roads, some roads back to the pre-storm condition, they refer to that, so. Few washouts. Um, luckily, the folly pond culvert didn't wash out. Um, I don't know if any of you went up that way during that. Storm, but there was um pretty close to eighteen inches of water um on the pond side of that road. Um, and as that road kind of slopes up going through that curve, there was still probably six inches on that upper part and it was really flowing pretty good. Um.
Right, just the culvert wasn't big enough to handle it or is it?
Um, block during the with a four inch rainfall, it was um a combination of the culvert probably, but mostly the. There was an active beaver or beavers um that are working against us. Um, and they're up there. Our guys are up there. Between our guys and Will, um, a couple times a week, trying to keep that clear. Um, there's a couple of.
I kind of thought that might have been the issue, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
There's a couple of um cage traps up there. I mean, there's no heads, there's not not lobster traps, but they're caged up. With weights to put in front of the culvert. It was something that D P suggested so that water can still pass through. The challenge and problem is that. Leaves and the other sediment that are, they have that much water are getting stuck up against the mesh and once that happens, it's still. You gotta get that clear and and I think it also the beavers are still build trying to build around that, but you can fish some of that stuff out of there. Um, but that is a culvert that fortunately didn't wash away during that storm. It I for some reason don't know how, why it didn't, but. Um, it needs to be age wise. It needs to be replaced. It would have been done before the paving project, but they. Um, needed certain permits because it's considered extreme. Um, and so.
Is it gonna be the next time it gets replaced? Is it gonna be a bigger size? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think for a lot of them, when we replace them, we do, we can upside, you know, up.
How big is that? Three feet?
Uh, I don't think so. Probably two.
Seems bigger than that.
But somewhere in there.
I could use a Google hat.
Well, I don't think we'll set up. Big that is.
Yeah. It is good size. I mean, another thing we're thinking of is trying to, you know, is there a way to kind of alter that? That culvert opening, so it's more like the one at the ball ground. Um, so the water kind of builds to a certain level, then kind of can fall into it. Um. You know, and they're presumably less likely to build a dam on top of it. Um. And if they did, it would be easy enough to.
Is that, I mean. We can track those and presumably take them to some other location on the mainland and get rid of them, not.
They can be trapped.
Not lethal. I'm not saying kill them. I'm just saying I take them.
Yeah, that's. I think Will has some people that.
Take them to a farm.
Will trap them. Yeah, they take them to the Beaver Farm.
I don't know. I mean, I mean, I've seen. I've seen someone had one in a trap that vision turned up here before they've been out there in the morning, but I know. It can be trapped. I think I think Will said we were outside of the, someone said we were outside of the trapping season right now, I think at this point, but.
I think the biggest thing too is he's, as long as they're not in round pond, he kind of lets them. Do do, let me know. We don't want them to build, clearly don't want them to build around that culvert, but.
Right.
Don't really really don't want them in round pond.
Yeah.
So try to keep them. Yes, we like it over here. These trees are better over here.
Yeah. Reminder that the sheriff's contract is um active through this December. Um. And it's up in to renew that presumably, so. Just reminder, I don't know if there's things that you're thinking of that, um. Any changes or things we need to question or how you think it's going with Ben, I mean, the exception of having the second spot filled. Um, just tell people, you know, how you think how the contract is and whether we need to change, ask for any changes in that.
I still don't think people are. Truly happy with what we've got. I mean, there isn't much we can do if they can't hire more.
If they can't hire anymore.
They can't hire anymore, we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to.
I still think that he should not leave his car at the very bottom when he.
And he said that they told him that's where they wanted to leave it.
Well, they've had someone coming. Chad's not here. There's someone else here on the day he's not, they've been coming during the day. And so if it's not parked there, then where will it park this, people aren't gonna, I mean, people are gonna know.
Yeah, they'll find the new spot.
I mean, it just seems like it's just a red flag for people to go.
We've, we've been getting more seven day coverage than. Earlier in the year, right?
Last month, I'd say, pretty close to seven days a week.
So if they, if there is someone out here, seven days a week. Over time, you would think things would.
But they're not out here seven nights a week.
But if that's what it is, and we can look at what we can get, so.
Unless somebody's willing to go.
I'd do it, but it's.
Anything between now and the next meeting, if you need a copy of the contract and send it out, um. If you can have any suggestions for changes by the next meeting, then. Um, that'll give us a month to iron it out with the sheriff.
Are they, are they proposing any changes?
Not that I, I'm just trying to remember, um, there were some big budget changes for Knox County's. That portion of the budget for next year, but I think most of that was on the jail side. Um, I don't think, I think there's a possibility there might be some wage increases.
Like big stipend increases or anything, that's what, basically the only thing that would come on our side, I'm just asking if they were. Pushing for any of that stuff, cause it seems like. Fairly generous on the housing and electricity subsidies.
I mean, they don't, they don't use any of them because they haven't anyone out here, so.
Well, they must be using some of them. That housing allowance, they must be using that, I don't think.
Oh, we're just, we have one rental that we pay for, it's it.
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
You will send a copy of the contract you sent.
I mean, the same as, I have to send it out to all of us.
Do you know how much? We've spent on the contract in this fiscal year?
Probably not close to what we have.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was trying to get at, like, what did we spend last year on the contract?
The last year, the last, um. In here, I wanna say it was like forty-five hundred bucks for the month.
Cause that whole contract value is.
That was if we got a second call.
So if we, if we got everything we wanted, it was gonna be like a hundred fifty thousand.
Well, that included the, like, the housing, like, yeah.
We have definitely not.
But if we're paying Knox County forty-five hundred dollars a month, that's only a third of that, and then the housing's another.
Be like seventy-two thousand.
Maybe, yeah, we probably at half of it spent maybe.
So it was sixty-two hundred and that covered. Um, end of August and half of September.
So, yeah, even if that's. Yeah, we're on, we're.
I mean, with the overtime and the rates that they're at, I mean, that, that'll add up pretty quick when they're doing that. Um, some of it, if it's directed by the sheriff is fifty-fifty, if it's at our request, it's a hundred percent.
What do they get overtime, is it double time or time and a half?
It's time and a half regularly, if it's a holiday, it's, I think, double. And then there is an island, if they're out for like the day, there's like a seventy-five dollar a day stipend that they get. Now, they don't, they don't get that extra stipend if there's, if the full contract being filled and we're paying the housing. There's, they don't get that daily one, there's a. Like that same twenty-five dollar a day if they work four consecutive days, I wonder, I think if they, I think it's how it still is. I'll send that out tomorrow.
It is not. I can't really think of anything off the top of my head, will, will you change at this point? Receive what we asked for, so. And that's not.
They're sending their reports, I guess, daily.
Oh, yeah, um, I haven't drafted the letter yet, um, towards the back of my, where I had, um. Rick Petrie was with, um, Atlantic Partners in EMS, um, kind of our. Kind of go to them for questions on any of the, um. Protocols to the state, um.
Draft letters of town to send to. Nails and.
Kind of putting some pressure on the state, I mean, they're not. You know, unaware of it, it's just kind of trying to put it front and center for them this year, I mean. To try and do something, you know, are there things the state can do to intend to advise or encourage or? You know, make easier, I mean, it's like in some of the training stuff, I mean, it's what it is, you have to do it, but. You know, like on EMS, it went from recertification every three years to every two years last year. Um, and for volunteer services, it's. And it's a lot of, a lot of training events, um. You know, we're able to do it, but for those, for those volunteers that are wanting to do it and. Can do it sometimes, it makes it really hard for them to be able to commit the time it needs to. But yeah, I think it's just trying to call attention, we can, I can, I'll drop something up for that and send it, and you're okay with us. Sending in for that. Other than that, just a couple, bunch of committee meeting, you know, we're past summer, so the committees are active, um. Housing committee met last night. Um, trying to get them to just that they, I think they're getting close to a point where they can provide. Kind of list of some recommendations or next steps for the board to consider, um, they're hoping. They're gonna meet again at twenty-nine. So they'll have that, presume, that list presumably in the December meet, one of the December meetings. For next steps, so there's been some good information, they heard from someone from Pankas yesterday about. You know, what, what housing projects look like for them when they do development in places, um. Before that, the report from Mary, which I think I sent out to. So they'd like to be able to give a quick overview of the report and what they're, what they've learned, what they think the next steps could be for the town to consider.
Put them on any agenda whenever they're ready, I would assume.
Okay, Veterans Day Thursday. Will be closed on our end, um, appeals board has their meeting. Um, Thursday night. Presumably to make a decision on the variance request that, um, came in, um, for Justin Grant and Jake. They had the public hearing. Into fourteen, almost four weeks ago. Um, they're at a position, I think they're in a position now where they can make the decision, they had to do that within thirty-five days of the hearing. Um, Midcoast Economic Development District, um, eighteenth and then the Midcoast Managers Meeting nineteenth and then. Um, town, everything's closed again the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Andy. Um, eleven reporter members.
Take long for that motion, don't do it.